I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I think everyone had a good Easter. It was awfully warm, but we got a nice day in the way of it. So I entertain a motion to approve the agenda, amended agenda.
Make that motion.
Motion.
Now, second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Approve the minutes from the 26th.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 26 meeting.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have general public concerns. No one? We must have another hot topic somewhere.
(laughing).
I'm guessing it might be down the line a little bit. Todd Lee is that the first 8:35? We can go with you, Todd.
Aye.
And Travis. Welcome.
Good morning. I know I talked to you guys a little bit about this a couple of weeks ago, but just as a refresher, the Conservation Board and the City of Humboldt have been working on a project to link the Eagle Ridge Park area, which is just west of the Reasoner Dam, with the Cottonwood Trail, which is east of the Reasoner Dam. The project would include a bridge across the west fork of the Des Moines River, as well as a short portion of trail which would outlet where there would be an access roughly in the middle of Eagle Ridge or the Eagle Ridge housing area. Price tag for the project would be right at about $1 million. We're in the process of filling out a transportation alternative grant, which would pay for 80% of that $1 million. Peggy, did you get a copy of that Friday that was able to be sent out?
I did not see one.
Here's what's done thus far. A lot of it's just legal requirements as far as the application goes, listing of the applicant, co-applicant at the county. What I do have on there is the, what Todd and I had discussed, a possible 100, or 50-50 split. So this grant application again is for an 80-20. It's financed through our regional COG Midas. These funds are currently allocated until fiscal year 2021. So what that would do, if we'd be awarded, would give us several years to be able to budget and set aside funds to make this project happen. Two main reasons really for, besides it being a partnership between the city and the county, but two main reasons for having the county listed as a co-applicant is that it is a regional TAP application. So to show that partnership between the two entities makes that application that much stronger. Secondly, if we held a, we're part of the community visioning program, which is sponsored by the DOT, trees forever, and Iowa State Extension. And one of the things identified by members of the community was enhancing the amount of pedestrian connections that we have throughout the area. So this bridge, which is the largest component of the cost, would get across the river and allow for future expansion west to connect to Sheldon Park. And that was, I know, that's an ultimate goal. I think we can get there. It's going to take some time, but if we take it off the chunk at a time and at least get across the river, we'd be that much closer. So what I'm asking, what we're asking from the supervisors today is to, this grant is due April 13th. However, my council meets tonight and will approve something similar. Our council has to approve that we will own and operate, maintain that for over 20, at a minimum 20 years. That's part of their requirement language for that application. So the county wouldn't be responsible for any of the ongoing maintenance or anything like that. It's just that partnership on the initial upfront construction costs. The breakdown is about $650,000 for the bridge and $350,000 for the trail.
Next to trails.
Correct. And that is a five-inch-thick HMA asphalt. Correct.
Is that for the trail?
Trail, correct.
So like how much length of trail?
1300 feet.
1300 feet.
So it's pretty short. That, when you start paving trails, that gets a little bit more costly than paving a street because of the scale, obviously. But one of the largest components of that remaining $450,000 for the, or $350,000, excuse me, for the trail portion is artwork. I mean, we'll have to clear it. There's some grading that'll need to be done. We don't need to make ADA compliance because it is a nature trail. However, based on the initial LiDAR reports, ISG took the topography, kind of snaked a path a little bit back and forth, was able to get what they believe to be very close to ADA compliant. So the grade will be pretty, pretty gentle.
You say ADA compliant?
ADA.
What does that stand for?
Americans with disability.
So somebody in a wheelchair could possibly do that.
Do the trail.
Yes. And one of the things to point out with this, one of the reasons that we have been discussing this particular project is those residents on Elmhurst and Eagle Ridge and everybody west of 169 in that area, the only way that somebody can walk currently to the rest of what I'll call the original part of Humboldt is to cross 169. By doing this bridge and trail, that would allow people to be able to walk down there, cross the river, and connect to Cottonwood, which runs under 169. So people wouldn't have to cross the highway anymore. And even with the rec center that's being constructed up on top of the hill, now people could be able to get on their bike or walk or whatever and go there.
Well, you know that, how rec centers work, don't you, Todd? When they get those up in a nice rec center, the people that use them get to the rec center and then they worry about finding the closest parking spot to the door of the rec center, but they're going in there to exercise, so, you know. But it's, I mean, I just had to throw in a little bit of humor because I've actually had a guy, he said, "You know, I've started going to a rec center." And he says, "Why do I go to the parking lot and try to find the closest place to park because I'm going to go in the rec center and exercise?" But, you know, no, it is a good idea. Just the whole connection of everything. And the safety factor.
Location of the middle school, high school.
The safety factor is huge. I mean, if you can go over or under a major traffic area, it's always a good thing.
It would benefit to a wide variety of different use of groups.
A lot of students get to the swimming pool without walking down the highway too.
Anything.
You would, if you were awarded this grant, you'd hear about it fairly soon.
I'd say in a couple of years to plan. Yes, we'll definitely have a couple of years to plan.
That'd be great. That'd help out a lot.
Yep. That's one of the things that made this so attractive was it'd be, it's a, well, one, it's an 80-20 grant application.
Yes, I like that.
But two, it does give us time to plan, center funds aside.
Too late for this year's budget.
Right. But even incorporating over three years is pretty reasonable.
So this would all be taken care of as far as the height and elevation for when the water's high and all of that stuff? It wouldn't be something else that could be flooded and ripped off?
Right. So the estimate of the bridge was based on a single pier bridge system. We did initially look because I wanted to avoid having to put up here into the river. I want to avoid that permitting. However, a clear span bridge of that size was, I believe, 280 feet in length, which that bridge alone was $1 million. So we can pay some engineering fees to get the permitting done to save $350,000. And the rest of the, it would be asphalt to help minimize damage done in high water so it wouldn't wash, rain, and crush limestone.
It's a great project. Anytime you get somebody to pay 80% of their improvement like that, you shouldn't let it go by the wayside.
Absolutely. The region by area that we are a part of gets a little over $200,000 a year in transportation alternative monies. There hasn't been any applicants here for a couple of years, so there is actually $880,000 in the pot right now. So right now is definitely the time to-
Looking pretty good.
Try to jump on the six foot. We're going to do it.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the application for the TAP grant.
Oh, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Travis, take it home with you, would you?
Yeah.
Just don't open it until you get out the door.
Not a problem. It's not powder or anything, right?
All right, Ben, are you ready? Started a little early. Think we can keep moving. You want four of them cheers out there for moving ability again?
Couple of things on the agenda for today. Requesting signatures for the chairman's. Last week, we approved the secondary road, Iowa DOT five-year construction program. But I had forgotten to put on there to approve the secondary road budget. That usually goes side by side with that. The first thing that I've got on the agenda is to approve the secondary road budget for fiscal year 2019.
We discussed this quite length last week, so I move we approve the 219 budget I presented.
You have a motion and you have a second?
A second.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the budget for 2019 on the secondary roads?
Didn't mean to shut you off, do you think, with that?
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
The next item to be packed is to approve contracts and bonds to Peterson Contractors, Inc., of Ryanbeck, Iowa. They are the contractor. That was a little bitter for the bridge replacement on C-20 between 169 and Livermore. We awarded the contract here two, three weeks ago. Basically, that set the ball in motion where the contractor team started getting his bonds and everything together for the project. Last week, they got everything returned back to us. And I guess once we approve this, we send it down to the DOT and the DOT signs off on it. This is again, like the last gentleman here, this is an 80-20 project where the DOT covers 80% of the cost.
Okay. Another technicality, just to keep moving along.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the contract and bonds with PCI project.
A motion and a second for that?
Second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries to PCI. Are these all signed?
They all need to be signed, yeah. Third item on the agenda is to approve an application for construction in the county's right-of-way and requesting a $1,500 reimbursement for the tile crossing. This is the one that Roger Myers brought to us back in November. And the tile crossing was actually going onto his neighbor's property and his neighbor did not give him permission. So he's changing the location of where the tile crossing is so that he's running from his own property to himself. We've got insurance copies from this contractor, which is Reutzel out of Burt. And they filled out, I guess, all of the necessary paperwork for the crossing.
So you're reimbursing this because it was in the wrong spot?
No.
How does this work again?
The county will reimburse up to $1,500.
Oh, putting it across?
They're putting the crossing in.
Okay.
And with that, the county requires that they put in concrete under the road.
Well, the reason you said that didn't get done previously was in the wrong spot. We got it in the right spot.
Because he said he was running from himself to himself, but in reality, he was running to his neighbor who did not give him permission.
Right, right.
That's why we tabled it last time.
Now we got it in the correct location.
Yep. I move we approve the request of Roger Myers for agricultural tile crossing and reimbursing $1,500 for completion.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We have a question out here. I know.
Where is he going to run the tile across now?
Sounds like it's north of, north of the sun's line. I don't have the exact location, but he has told me that it is going to be from his property to himself. When he gets closer to this, obviously, the contractor will come in and get the appropriate signs for closing the roadway. I don't know. Any time that they're basically draining from themselves themselves is making them sign an agreement that says that I, Roger Myers, allow myself to drain the ground from my property. It sounds like there's a tile line out there right now. It's undersized. And what he's looking at doing is basically putting a new 10-inch line in through his field. He does have an outlet because the creek does run through there. Yeah, we didn't ask because, you know, he's draining from himself to himself.
I don't know why we should be spending taxpayer money to tear up that road when he could run that tile to north through his own property all the way without causing any problems.
Isn't this kind of a code thing though? We can't?
It's the county policy.
The policy, but and you also cannot deny going across the right-of-way, correct?
As long as it's, as long as it's a natural force.
Yeah, natural force, waterway.
By him saying that he already had a tile line running to the east and to the north, we're assuming that he's following the natural waterway.
That's where it needs to go, obviously, or should go.
Right.
Well, hearing his objection, is there any other discussion?
Only one clarification, that Ben, you mentioned that he's upsizing that tile line? Is there one going this direction across under the road as, right now?
There is, it sounds like there's a six inch that runs under the road right now. And is it your property that it runs into right now? No. It sounds like there's a six inch that runs east into adjoining property. I don't have the flat book, maybe to tell you who it is. But then it turns through his property and runs north. And I'm assuming that-
Back into the ditch.
I'm assuming it runs into the creek that cuts through the corner of his property.
Well, this is not replacing something. This is a new tile line.
This is a new tile line, but it's basically following the terrain of the old six inch.
All right. Any other discussion?
Did we have a first and second?
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
The next item up is to approve ProCoOp out of Poconanas as the 2018 dust control applicant.
Who got the bid last year?
ProCoOp. We haven't gotten a quote from Dino's in-
Couple of years, haven't we?
Couple of years now. I believe I have it here. Their price is the same that it's been since 2015 on the price per foot at $15 a foot.
Maybe we should add Todd in here so we can get those guys to boil that road out by Sheldon Park.
I'll forward this to them.
Please do.
If you'd like to do that if you like.
All right. I'll make a motion for awarding the quote to ProCoOp.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the dust control on ProCoOp. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now we have a quote for Vogel Traffic Service.
This is for our center line, edge line striping and stop bars and railroad tracks. Vogel's been the ones that have done the striping, I guess, for as long as I've been here. We have taken quotes from other agencies. Usually about every, about every two to three years, we take another quote to make sure, you know, keep these guys honest. And these guys have beaten it every time.
Yeah, it looks like there's slight price increase, but minor.
Yeah, it looks like it's a nickel per gallon increase in what last year's costs are, but still considerably cheaper than-
It has been.
From 2012 to 2015.
You got a lot of miles to go this year.
I think we're doing part of it as center line. We steadily decrease the number of edge line that we've done as we've done overlay projects. I think we center line roughly 70 to 80 miles. This is roughly third of Pedro's. And then we edge line roughly 50 a year.
That's reflecting paint, isn't it?
Yeah. They have special needs that they put in this paint to shine off of the headlights to get this reflected.
Does it have kind of a formula, if you will, or a protocol, you know, where this gets-
For where it-
What miles this gets done?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a detailed map in my office. It basically rotates and then I usually do a road trip throughout the county. If it's a question between three or four different locations, I'll hit those three or four different locations and go on which one looks worse.
So you've got, yeah, I figured you did, but.
We always do the yellow. Once in a while, we do the white. But once you do that white, it has to be done thereafter, right?
Yeah, once you do an edge lining, it's like any of this. You maintain it. A number of years ago, the county opted to not do edge lining as we did overlay projects. And I believe it's for any Pedro that we've got that's less than 100 or 150 vehicles a day. Which surprises me. We have a few Pedro's that are that way tracked account. We spend between $35,000 and $40,000 a year doing striping. It's kind of what we budgeted in the past.
I'll approve the quote for Vogel Traffic Services for 2018.
You have a motion?
1370.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Do you guys have anything for me? I think you guys are aware the union had their vote on switching to 410s here last Tuesday and that bid get approved 10 to 6.
Oh, okay.
That will take place the first full week after Memorial Day. So the Friday before Labor Day.
Good trial. We'll see how that works out. Yeah.
How did your last day go out there for up in Bogal? We were all in the meeting.
Yeah, you guys were at-
We were at Hampton in a meeting.
They were all of us over there.
And I remembered on the way home that it was last day, but we were sitting in a meeting in Hampton, so.
It was, it was a decent turnout. A few of the retired guys showed up and I think he's looking forward to moving up to Clear Lake and enjoying some fishing time, is what it sounds like. But, you know, typical Dave fashion, he said, "You know, if you got any questions about anything or how we did anything in the past, you have myself on the board to give him a call." He's going to get the questions. And Tom's got big shoes to fill.
Well, you don't replace someone that's been there 40 some years and just take the, I'm sure he'll do a good job, so, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Looks like the next on the schedule would be the- We've got that within the next 30 days.
Right after Sheldon Park.
Like I said, either in the 50 or that 100 year plan.
Ungoing joke about Sheldon Park.
It's a marker out. It's a form to mark the road.
Looks like we're up with, as soon as the sheriff gets done complaining about his gravel road. They have the ability to sign a dog, a lease for the- And I, I don't know, did you get my email? I replied back to this email?
No.
And I just wonder why your name is on there personally.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that either. It should probably be like Humboldt County.
Kind of what I thought. I don't, I'm not, I mean, we can get that changed. I think that's easy. I just think that it should be just Humboldt County, period. I mean, if someone gets bit out there, I don't know that we want our sheriff personally standing on the front line, Dean Kruger.
Yeah, I can, I can get hold of Todd Holmes. That's the nature of the attorney. Just get that switched and maybe get it up there next week.
And when you put the county's address on there, two instead of you. It's typical that we would use that instead of you personally. Dakota City, make sure.
All right. Yeah, I'll get a hold of Todd or your John can get a hold of Todd and get that changed for next week.
So it's 203 things?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Oh, I'll make the motions. You sign that with those corrections to the lease agreement.
Good. We have a motion? And a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So was that for the new road or was that for, this is the lease.
That's just continuation, right, yeah. The same as it was before.
You guys can have it. You want a copy of mine? My copy? Can't? You want it? Okay. How about acceptance place on file, general assistance, first and second quarter report for 2018?
I'm assuming Kathy is coming down because nobody gave me any papers.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
Let's know if there's any issues.
Okay. I don't know what her number is, but.
Okay, otherwise, could we go to the-
Yep.
Fun topic of insurance.
Insurance. Documents.
And I had sent a note off to Cindy at IGHCP and said, "The documents with Wilmark are exactly the same as the documents for IGHCP. Why do we have to sign two of them? Why do we have to do it?" Because they came from, one came from Wilmark, one came from IGHCP. And she said, "Just fill out the IGHCP ones, send it back to her and she'll get them to Wilmark for it."
Thank you. Kathy's on our here.
Whole bunch of stuff here.
Yeah, there were several documents. It gave us our final on our premium rate, which was down to 2.35 instead of the 4.42 or 4.02, which they reported. So 2.35 is looking very good. They had asked me, with our renewal rate down from 4.42 to 2.35, did we want to just pay the higher percent and let the difference go to partial self-funding? Or just pay the lower rate? This is before they made up their sheet. I couldn't see any reason to increase our partial self-funding anymore. We have a very healthy, yeah.
Big bank already.
Partial self-funding, yeah. So I told them to just go ahead and do the 2.435. I said that was-
Okay.
So I wanted to let you guys know that I'd done that. The rest of that in there is just some information as far as what our plan looks like, the Medicare compliance rules, the MST addendum, and then some other information. The designated security coordinator will be myself and then I always authorize Chris Friend, so if they have to have any questions, they can get a hold of one of us. And then also IGH- And then also IGHCP, so...
That's probably the best renewal in the Tin County area.
It's pretty darn cheap for thinking that we could have been 16, 18 percent, and now we're down to 2.35. That's outstanding.
Well, that's good to hear. With that, entertain a motion.
And I will make that IGHCP insurance slash Wilmark, so you can make it all in one motion and not have to do two.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion Dave.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Did they make any comment how they're gonna come down and talk with us about some of the changes that...
Only, they called and made an appointment in May to do some meetings. They're gonna meet with secondary roads first.
Okay.
Then they're gonna make their flow rates up here.
It's a little confusing.
Because of the changes?
Of the changes.
Explain the changes.
Explain the changes.
And I would suggest to the board that the meeting be mandatory.
Yes.
So that we don't have some people...
Saying, oh, I didn't know.
I'm gonna make up a sign-in sheet so that if somebody is out sick or just absolutely cannot be there, then we know who didn't make it, so we can make sure and get them in on the loop for the next meeting.
Good idea.
We could possibly be paving if we are...
Oh.
That would be difficult.
Dave and I won't be at the meeting, but I hope Sue would make it mandatory for all of our guys.
Would that be a good time to talk about wellness too? They said they'd meet with us as a group.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
We have to have a mandatory group. We may kill two birds with one stone that day.
You bet. And they said they would come up with a payroll suffer for us to put in, to let people know the date and the time and where at and all that, so... Because I said, do you want us to come up with a warning? I'd feel better if you, IGHCP, came up with the warning. And she said, yep, they would gladly do that for us and get it to us in plenty of time, so...
So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Do we need to let Denise know if somebody knows about wellness?
I can inform her, yeah.
She said she'd come up, but...
Okay.
That way we won't have to have to have two meetings.
We're ready.
If you want to.
Not a bad idea, no.
If you're ready.
Morning Kathy.
Good morning. Thank you.
I expect you'll want to use that.
You know what, I didn't, we have talked about copies without, and something that we're going to the board so that you guys can take them if you wanted to. If you, I do have a copy that we're submitting. Really, nothing out of the ordinary. We're staying within budget for general assistance, help with rent utilities, burial services, the typical things in our contributions for, I don't know, might come out of that budget. One thing I did just want to point out to the board members, just because for our next fiscal year budget, we did increase the budget line item for rent payments. And just looking back to the last fiscal year, for each quarter for FY '17, we had gone 639 for rent compared to the 1125 this year. And then for second quarter, looking at rent payments for FY '17, we were 675 and 1425 for that fiscal year, so pretty significant increase for those requests we've had coming in for help with rent.
In the same reason, because it's that two months in a row.
No, not unless we have an inter-person agreement for social security, like if they're applying for social security and are disabled, you know, and I don't think any of these on them would, I don't think we've done any of those, to be honest with you, this year. Another thing that we don't know for sure will impact the general assistance budget, I guess, moving forward, are some of the changes that county social services has made in their policies with paying up for rent. They've really tightened up.
Didn't you run some of that by us previously?
Allison Hauser, I believe, was down here and talked to the board when county social services made those changes, and she provided an update at that time, so... So yeah, those two things combined were really wide. I looked at, maybe they'll change for the line item for the upcoming year, I guess, so... Otherwise, no surprises, no significant changes for report to the board.
You know, we're close to getting that in the affairs people too, don't you?
Yes. Yeah, while we really, between general assistance, veterans affairs, unknown ministerial association, we do a lot of back and forth to try to figure out if we can't help and somebody else can help again, just because our policies and guidelines are different, so, yeah, there's a lot of communication between all those organizations trying to figure out who can offer some assistance when people are in need, so...
Well, we accept and place on file and general assistance report as presented by Kathy. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second, so is that for both quarters, right?
First and second.
First and second quarters. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we get to the Wilmark insurance.
Union contractor. I think it would help. There's a P-56 sign, they could just hook the right guy in, that would take... I think it'd help because I mean, some of them semis, they come up and then they have...
All right.
Oh, nice paid road that's on. Yeah, I've seen one guy turn around and the other guy had it on south.
Yep.
All right, next here is a letter for the secondary agreement with the Humboldt County Secondary Roads and AFSCNE.
This is the union agreement that Ben referred to that the guy has approved. This isn't the official original, but this is what Renee said to me and said, go ahead and have you guys okay it. Matt has signed off on it, so we just need your okay on it.
Need a motion on that?
Go ahead, Dave.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second Dave's motion.
Motion in a second to accept the agreement between us and the secondary roads. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Ben, did you want to state that they re-approved them or today's date or...
Today is fine. There was some confusion with the guys on whether or not they have to vote on that every year.
Oh.
For the four tens, as long as they're in this current contract? Or if this was the one vote, and I don't know if they resolved that or not, if this is the one vote for the next three years of the contract.
Isn't that up to the union's interpretation of that?
I would assume so.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, what they're signing off on is a trial basis.
That's trial.
Trial for one year.
Their fourth line item, you know, gives any of us an out, whether it's, you know, if you guys don't see the...
So it's a trial period, boy.
Right, so I, I mean, I don't want to far cry from in the union or a lawyer, but I would read that as...
If you didn't like it, we want to switch back, or if they didn't like it.
Or if they didn't like it, yeah, that's the language that they wanted in it, was that they also, if they found out that they didn't like it, that they...
I wouldn't read into that they'd have to vote on it again the following year.
Yeah.
That's kind of the way I took it too, was that...
I think you're on the right track.
Here's CSPAC.
All right, so we have that. Looks like we're getting closer towards the bottom. Meeting report.
Okay. Monday, we had a housing meeting at 3:00 o'clock down in City Hall. We talked about some of the same things that we talked about here with city manager. We also talked about some more housing expansion and so forth, and Rick, you missed that meeting, so...
Yeah.
Didn't miss too much, we just talked two hours, nothing particularly new.
I visited with Travis afterwards and he caught me up.
Okay, and Wednesday, I went out and helped him unload the, was it Tuesday? Tuesday, went out and unloaded some food at the food pantry. Wednesday, I had a CSS meeting up in O Sage. We spent the, it's supposed to start at 10:00, and we spent till 5 minutes of 12 arguing with Susus County because they hadn't paid their dues. And we decided to let them have another 30 days to either pay up or get out. You know, they had a lot of carryover and they didn't want to cooperate with the group. And we've argued with them all the time, and in all respect to the board member there, he had, he was just acting on behalf of what the rest of them said. Finally about noon, we got started with the meeting. It was pretty routine after that, except we spent another two hours evaluating the CEO. Anytime somebody has to make decisions, some people don't like him. So we spent another two hours doing that. We got out at about 3:00, but nothing earth shaking as far as programming, pretty routine. We get Susus County to pay their dues and get the CEO evaluated, we'll be good for another month. Don't mean to badmouth Susus County, but 22 counties and other the old ones haven't paid up. And then we all went to Hampton on Thursday. We thought we was doing, talking about backfilling, and it was a little bit of backfill, but it turned out to be more disgruntled people about windmills not getting backfilled and some of the funds getting cut there. So it was more windmill discussion than it was the backfill discussion, some of both. It was good to see, I suppose we had, what, 40, 50 people there from our district? Isaac came up and talked about some of the funding. It was a good meeting, I thought. That was the extent of my meetings.
Okay, Monday, I had a VA meeting at 4:00, proved the claims. Tuesday was out to food pantry, 10:30, helped unload the truck. Wednesday, I had that Agwell meeting up here, and 4:00, I had a Midas meeting in Fort Dodge. Thursday, we went over to Hampton. I thought that was a pretty informative meeting. And then I had an animal control meeting at 6:00 Thursday. That's all I had.
The past Wednesday, the 28th, was I up here for the wetlands informational meeting on the drainage wall closures at 10:30. And as already stated, on Thursday, the 29th, we had the District Two supervisors get together for discussion over in Hampton. Also on the 29th, I had that afternoon, a decategorization meeting in Webster City that I went at. And that's all I had last week.
I had, on Wednesday, I was up here at 10:30 for the wetlands meeting, and then Thursday evening, City Hall for the Dog Pounder Shelter, whatever we're gonna call it, meeting. Just more information on that one there, trying to find a direction and property and size. We did get the size kind of nailed down as to how big it needed to be. So they're looking at some properties owners to approach and if they can find a location that would be suitable. And gave them the bitter pill was that there is no money set aside to build this building, so it'd have to be funded somehow.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Is that it, Rick?
Yep.
All right, started Tuesday with food pantry. Appreciate all of the help coming out there, and truck was a little late, but we got it unloaded. We had a group of kids in the group home that were just wanting to see, we were just mattering hops, but they're like 25 minutes late, about every 30 seconds, well, he's not coming.
County boys help us out, two movies and stones and polish them.
Yes, they did. They moved a big pile of snow there so they could get the truck closer, and that was nice. Then Tuesday night, I had the Edmill Board in Eagle Grove, poly call for our meeting. Wednesday, we had the wetlands meeting up here. Then Thursday and Friday, I didn't have any work for myself, so I rode along with Carl and Dave over to Hampton for the meeting over there, and then come back and ran to Webster City for my CFR meeting on Thursday night, so that was the extent of my meetings. Didn't hardly get anything done on the way.
Yeah.
Pay for your going to Jamaica.
Yeah, evidently. Okay, we have any other items, Peggy?
I don't.
Okay. Wow.
Yeah, it was pretty full page. We went through it pretty quick.
And so, quick, we don't know what, we just sit here and look at each other, or you guys, anybody want to start an argument so we can get going here, or what?
We got a workshop.
I know.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second? Any other discussion?
917.